Sign offs, if we have any sign offs. I think there was a couple of people in.
Okay. drove in planning board meeting. October twenty, need a motion open?
So motion. Is Charlie ready?
We're rolling. Second bump?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So the meeting open?
So start with sign offs, see if anyone's interested.
Anybody here for sign offs? Unnoted, okay. Estes Woods continued?
Sure.
Hearing? Motion open?
Well, you wanna still wait for Peter and we'll take someone in front?
Can you, you want to say?
Not Peter, but Taylor.
Taylor, that would be great.
Do we need Taylor for that, or do we? You guys are up, so what do you want to do? You wanna start discussion? You wanna wait?
Yeah, we'll wait, can you have something else?
Okay, motion to endorse Scott Green's my last.
So motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Should've voted unanimous, we'll be signing. Larry, what do you win for?
Um, Steve DeHolis coming in on building his road.
Yeah.
So I'm just here a little early.
Okay. With, when's he coming in? Cause we get pretty ahead.
He told me.
Okay.
Mark with leases, bonds.
Yeah, does he have one already, or just want the paperwork?
No, he, he's the developer, I'm just a road builder.
Okay.
Larry, I downloaded all the forms here and also some copies of a letter of credit from the bank, irrevocable, and also a tri- file to go by. What I need from you people is a list of all the work that needs to be done with the project.
We did it today, it's coming in at eight o'clock.
Okay.
I'm just here early because.
Yeah.
If you want, you can pick these up.
I could go home and have dinner and then come back, you know?
Do you want the forms?
No, no.
Okay. He's got them, he'll do them.
His wife will come in.
Okay. Anybody else got anything? No, we got a quorum, it's open. Anybody wanna say anything?
You're gonna be.
It's awful quiet.
We're gonna sign his thing.
Well, that'll take a couple of seconds.
Yeah.
Let's get these things out of the way. Pause the meeting. We're signing a form. So we, we got them right here?
Yeah.
That'd be our best side on the camera. Just watch. I don't know what we needed a quorum for. Can you start without Taylor? Present anything?
Um, I can start.
There are, there are.
I think there is a turnout. Trying to get things moving. Did I? One hidden somewhere?
So what happened while in sixteen seventy-five?
Sixteen seventy-five? In that year?
That they separated from Raleigh.
Separated from Raleigh?
Raleigh, apparently, right, sixteen seventy-five. They separated from Raleigh.
Danvers.
And then, then they were part of Bradford until eighteen fifty. Then they.
Independence. Yeah. Got their own troops and everything.
What would happen in sixteen seventy-five?
Somebody probably lost like a family.
My hometown's a third old town.
Yeah, no, it is, right. Sixteen thirty's pretty good. Good there. There was an article in, um, I don't know what it was in. And it talked about the oldest towns in Massachusetts. It was a good, something in the Globe a while ago.
Never seen that TV show, it's actually pretty good, How the Shakes Have the State, How the States Got the Ships. Pretty interesting.
I would like to see that.
It goes, and there's a number of shows.
Hey, Taylor's here.
Yeah.
I've got a flat tire.
Did you really?
I had one of those on.
Okay.
Friday of last week, we, we, sorry, I'm looking, didn't have a blowout.
Wow.
Green tires.
Alright. So we already opened, right? We did open, so back on? Okay. So Taylor's presenting something?
Well, I could, I could use that out, I could go.
We opened for signing the my last.
Yeah, we opened, we just didn't have anything there.
So, Mr. Chair, members of the board, we have on the end of September received Peter's first round of comments. We haven't responded to them yet because we wanted to deal with one issue with the board this evening relative to the angle at which the road comes into, the new road comes into Estes Way. And so, and, and the impact on the property, the SFRS property across the street. And so, it's been designed to meet the regulations. And you might recall that Taylor, last time he was here, had a diagram that showed if a car pulled up to the end, where the headlights would go and what the safety impacts are. And so, um, is that the, yeah.
Okay.
And so, um, you know, we'd like to hear what Peter has to say about that. And the abutters obviously have, you know, something to say. And then we wanna hear what the board wants to do because before we move forward, we wanna get this resolved.
Okay.
So, Peter, I don't know if you have.
Pete, you up?
Yes, for the record, my name is Peter Williams of GZA Geo Environmental, consultant for the planning board. And as you were aware, at the last meeting, we had the discussions of the angle approach. And it was also one of the topics that we discussed at length at the site meeting. And I, I look at this as, it's a situation where we have a roadway that is, has an uphill approach. So cars will be generally accelerating and then slowing down as they come to the intersection. Be typical of what a driver would do. And that the neighbors across the street, the abutters across the street, were requesting that we shift the angle, move the road up towards, I guess that's to the east. And, and move it away from their driveway, which was close to almost directly across. I see a condition where you have a problem with a car coming up the road, maybe in the winter, or you know, not being able to stop and then sliding across. My thoughts are that it's, if it's hitting the brakes and sliding, once it hits Estes Way, it's gonna start sliding downhill. So if we angle it further up, you know, at an angle, you know, up, up the hill, that has a greater chance of maybe of going over and looping and then sliding into the driveway. I think it probably has less chance of doing that if it's a more straight approach at the driveway where it would come onto the road and then start sliding down the roadway. Now, there can be a chance, I mean, this is rare because we're talking about a uphill, you know, deceleration approaching an intersection where a car could be going so fast it goes straight across. That could happen. It, you could have something like that happen even when it's angled upward. It just could be a matter of chance. I don't believe that you can move it that far away, that you reduce all risk for that. But I think the risks are probably slim considering the amount of traffic and, you know, the angle of approaches and, and the uphill deceleration. The other disadvantage, if you have a roadway, if we start bending that angle of the proposed roadway, we're gonna condition where we're gonna have cars coming down, they're just gonna be making a, a, just a swinging turn into the, into the new roadway while having to slow down to make more of a ninety degree turn to come into the development. So that's kind of a detraction where you can have cars, you know, going too fast approaching the, this incoming into the subdivision. The other thing that I saw there out in the field was that the, uh, the driveway across, the roadway was very wide, the, the street open. And it's almost like it had a very, it had like a sidewalk ramp and everything, so it was very wide. There could be ways to kind of tighten that up a little bit so it, you know, reduces the opening for the driveway. I mean, you're approaching to the driveway a little bit more for riding a turn, but that would be some, one way to mitigate the risk. But I, I don't, I don't see that moving the, moving the angle too far up would be, um, uh, increase the, you know, increase the, or reduce the risk of some sort of unfortunate ass accident that way. And I think it's probably better in the alignment that is that right now. The, I think it was clear when we were looking at, out in the field that, that the lights would mainly be going because the cars are gonna be taking, making that approach and making the turn, that most of the lights are gonna be pointing in between. I mean, they're gonna sweep across, but probably when they're coming forward towards the, uh, the intersection, that they won't be facing directly into the, the rooms, windows of the house across the street.
Now, what speed were you considering making that analysis?
Well, I didn't make an analysis, it's more of a judgment that, um, and, you know, you're, you're coming up the hills and you, you know, most people in neighborhoods travel, you know, I, I know in my neighborhood, they don't travel really fast and, you know, but they will be coming up. I, I didn't have a speed, I guess. You know, it's more just how a car would react if it was in an emergency situation because this is the sort of situation that the neighbors are concerned with. And there's, and there's, you know, a number of possibilities.
Yeah.
That's the problem.
Now, what would be the downside?
You may could do it one way and have a risk for one condition, I mean, it's.
What would be the downside of straightening that out so that it would clear the driveway? Both with light pollution and also i- if it, if it did go out, and I'm not talking one mile an hour, if it did travel with some substantial speed because sometimes you, you'll have traction on the main way, I don't know what the, what the sun exposure is gonna be on that road in the winter. And then you hit a patch of ice and you're going straight across. And I can tell you from a good twenty years living next to the Evergreen International Speedway, they fly down a straightaway and blast right through. There is, I don't care what's there, stop sign, ice, I, you know, they'll go skating right through and they're gonna navigate that turn at thirty-five miles an hour coming down. And, you know, we've had a lot of issues with that. You can't really, we, we do our best to protect against not so cautious drivers in a, in a residential area. So to, to mitigate it, if it did straighten it out and somebody did accelerate, whether they knew in the subdivision or just not paying attention, or thought it was the conditions and they couldn't navigate it properly due to the weather, then they would end up. What's, what's directly across, since I did not make the site, is it a, is it a guardrail environment, right?
No, it's a pretty open sidewalk.
It's just a big, okay, so last place you wanna put, put cars on the sidewalk, but what's, so what's?
It's fairly wide. Well, this is, this is the driveway opening here, it's, it's pretty wide.
So what's?
So you turn it that way, but then you're gonna have the cars racing down. You know, racing. Well, I mean, it's gonna make them.
Point the, I guess, my, my issue with it is it, is it, right now you have almost a T.
Yeah.
So by rotating it, you're encouraging people and making it able for them to carry more speed through.
I'm just telling you from experience.
No, I understand, but they will ca- they'll be able to carry even more speed on top of what you're saying, I guess.
So if this was navigated through, so the, so the light solution would obviously not, not go there, would go there. And if they didn't manage to get up to a good size speed, and if the hand is out there because someone else was coming up, okay, and then they, or whatever, reverse right through the intersection, they would end up not here. Or they would end up here somewhere. If they went straight across right now, we're gonna end up going across here, right into the driveway. Not if we change the road. But it, it will turn it further up.
Right, yes. Okay. Some of my questions. So your proposal is to just leave it the way it is? Is that right?
That's sort of your, the.
Well, I, I, the proposal is to, to, we wanna hear what the board wants us to do.
We, we believe this is the safest way, in our opinion, but at the same time, we're here.
And it meets the regulations.
And it meets the regulations.
Right.
I don't disagree with that.
But at, but at the same time, we're, that's what we're trying to discuss, I mean,
Okay.
I, we'll, we'll do whatever ultimately everyone agrees, but in our opinion, this is the safest layout from an engineering perspective.
What way is Peter saying, turn it to the right one?
No, he's saying, he was just like it is.
I, I agree.
Say it like that, I wanna hear what the residents have to say about that, cause they're gonna be living there.
You're agreeing with us?
One of us here is gonna be living through this.
So you have two engineers that agree this is the safest?
Yeah.
Whether it gets rotated, that's.
I like this because a ninety degree turn, they, you have to stop almost to take it. Slow down. But if it's a merge turn, like you're, you're talking Evergreen's more of a merge turn, so.
It seems that way, yeah. But they just go blasting right, doesn't matter.
They can on this. Well, they can on this because they have to take a sharp right.
That, that's, that's what I'm saying is that if you, if you start turning it up, you're gonna be approaching an Evergreen situation. I, I kinda get an idea what situation you're talking about.
Yeah.
I've seen some of those.
It's like a merge almost, you know?
Those are the worst.
And coming out of this proposal.
Yeah.
The closer you get to that. I mean, the idea, I've seen so many roads being, you know, just gone from, you know, turned from merges to right angles and it's a much safer condition.
I don't think we've ever put a, this is the first one I've seen in twenty-three years where roadway does come out straight on to someone else's driveway. So I, I'm gonna say that we probably haven't seen that condition exactly before. But where, where the residents that are gonna be, what, what do you guys have to say? Bill, go ahead.
I'm William Cook from ten Estes Way in Groveland. The only question I have, and I had asked it before, Estes Way itself, when they built Estes Way, the road was shifted over for some reason. And when you look on the original map, it talks that Estes Way was, did not have the proper site distance on the corner that's just prior to that roadway. My question is, does that affect the other road coming in for the intersection?
I can answer that question.
Okay.
We did talk about this briefly at the sidewalk, which I demonstrated to some degree. What it was, is what he's referring to is this turn here. And this slope, the site distance issue was looking, traveling in this direction, looking this way. And what they did is, this slope was cut back to increase the site distance, provide what they needed, which is why the road was shifted. This was cut back, vegetation was supposed to be maintained, it isn't necessarily maintained in, to its full degree. So you have the partial site distance due to that. Obviously, with the house being built here, now it will be maintained, so that site distance will be there. In addition, that's a main reason the road can't shift entirely is the site distance.
Okay. And.
Can I answer your question?
Any other questions? What's, uh, what's your thought on this, since you're?
Yeah, I'm Jose Escobar, seven Estes Way, I'm right across the street.
Yep.
So, and I, I agree personally with, with the statement. Our, our major concern obviously is, is it's directly across the street from our driveway. And our mailbox is right there. So I agree with the, in theory, at least from a layman's perspective, a ninety degree or what appears to be a ninety degree seems safer because it makes them want to stop, in theory. Can I go up for a second?
Yeah.
So, the way that the road comes out onto Estes, it, it goes like this. So on the map, if I'm looking at it now, it looks like a ninety degree turn. However, it's, it's a pretty, pretty pronounced angle to rounding.
A rounding.
It's a rounding. So I'm already, I'm not someone that has much. So a couple, so here's a couple of thoughts on mine, right? Our major concern is obviously the driveway is however wide Estes Way is, right? Sixteen feet, twenty feet, whatever it is, okay? And our driveway is right there. So children's safety, pedestrian's safety is obviously number one concern. You know, line of sight, all that stuff. So that's where we had talked about on the walkthrough, about what is the possibility of angling it so that it is not directly in front of our driveway? And, and if you look at it, it's directly in front of your driveway. I mean, it's the road, as it comes out, my house is, my driveway's right there. So here, we look at it on, on, on a plan, but when you look at it on the field, it's right in front of your house. So that's a big concern for us. So we had talked about potentially angling it so that it's not directly in front of our driveway. Even if it's five feet over, you know, whatever the distance is, at least the cars are now starting to turn before our driveway instead of right in front of our driveway. So that was one, angling it. The second piece is that this angle is pretty pronounced. When you look at it and how the stakes, how the stakes are. So if, if the engineers say this is the, the safest way, well then can we remove the rounding? And here's where I go with that.
And I'll address that.
When you, when you're driving up, up tech, onto Estes, Estes is also rounded. And granted, I've, I've only lived there a few years. I'm going up Est- I'm going up uptech either way, I'm not really slowing down that much because that's my street. And I can see there's no cars coming.
Yep.
So I just go. And, you know, like any race car, you try to hug the turn as much as you can, which is what will happen here as well. Okay? And so, and the, I, I believe the entrance onto Estes is wider than this maybe, I'm not sure, I don't know. But, so the question is, if you can't move it because it's not the safest design, then can we eliminate the rounding so that now you're forced to slow down? Because now you can't hug the curve. That's, that's, that's second ask. And/or a third would be, could we potentially put some kind of a speed bump? Or something that would make them slow down? Because, not that we want a speed bump on our, on our road, but how do you ensure that the traffic slows down? Because again, I'm a resident on the street. And you're coming home from work, you just wanna get home and you're just driving, you might be fifteen, it might be twenty miles an hour. Whatever it is, I don't know. But based on all of the, you know, that they've mentioned, it's starting to go downhill as you come around this curve. So what happens, whether it be sunlight, snow, weather, or just not paying attention? What happens if there is pedestrian traffic and/or other visual traffic coming up? So those are the concerns, is how do we slow down the traffic coming onto the, onto this new proposed road if you're not able to move it? So that, or angle it? Because when you, when you're out on the field and you do look at it across the street, it is directly across the street from our, from our street. And, and, you know, we have children and there's children on, on the road that ride their bicycles, so, you know. It's all, it's all good, it's all, something happens.
Yeah. What's the disadvantage to straightening that out? I mean, I, I see, I see all the danger zones here, if we don't, but what's, what's really the downfall if we straighten that out so that it, even if we shift it over five feet to that right lane is out of there?
It's probably not incrementally that significant, it's just, you start pushing it too much.
What do you suggest?
Right, when you, when you, when you have those roundings and then you start, you know, bending it, the rounding, you know, is spread out.
Right, right.
And it's hard to, you know, to really visualize it until you start, you know, tweaking a little bit more.
Yeah. And, and I do understand that this is designed exactly the way the red goes, so the, um, so you actually, i- if we, if it comes to the conclusion to slide this over for safety, it will be at the request of the board and waiver requested and.
I'd rather see a T and, and less of the rounding. I'd go along with that and no speed.
How, how big is the rounding? Yeah, we can't do speed bumps.
Twenty-five feet.
Twenty-five feet.
And that's something we'd have to go by fire chiefs.
Yeah.
Right, cause that and DPW.
Yeah.
Affects plowing and fire trucks.
So if you kicked it, if you kicked it over a lane and still kept everything.
A lane, that's more than five feet.
Well, it, one vehicle lane, five feet of a vehicle width, um.
Well, five feet's not a vehicle, right? So a lane, how?
It's not very wide, it's.
Twelve feet. That's not five feet, it's twelve feet.
So. Gentlemen, what do you suggest?
I just, I, we, we need to talk about real numbers, so that's, so if it's twelve feet, it's twelve feet, if it's five feet, it's five feet, but it,
How far?
They're different.
What's the, what's the furthest you could shift that? If you straightened that line right out, how far would that be at the end?
What do you, I mean, so this goes like this?
Yeah. What would that be?
How far up this way? Gosh, probably about thirty feet, twenty-four feet.
Okay.
I guess, I mean.
So that's the worst case.
Does it do anything to your lot one?
Yes, it would cut into the area.
Well, I know, but I think you still have sufficient area, right?
It would have to, um,
Right, I know.
It would have to be reconfigured to some, yeah, we probably would have sufficient, we have about eight thousand extra.
But, but do you mean your shape issue as well as your, your frontage?
We should, good with the circle. Yeah, it, it would be tight.
Yeah, I, I would be, I wouldn't wanna go all that far. Cause then you, then you've got the, the opposite race car problem, right?
We have, we certainly have frontage up here, right?
Yeah. So that's, that's the furthest.
And that would be a very significant weight request on the.
Right, right. And. Understood. Okay. So now, what's a happy medium? If thirty's the far, what would, what would do it? To meet everybody's concerns?
I think, I mean, the, the neighbors are just talking about concerns with the, 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 the kids, you know, riding bicycles in the streets.
Sidewalks, right there, through everything.
Streets and sidewalks and everything. And if you're starting to turn towards the Evergreen situation of a merge, you, you, it's a more danger to them.
The Ever, the Evergreen is really just the, the flat straightaway and just nobody slows down becau- because it's a straight and they just go. And if they, by the time they get up to the end, cause they can't really see towards the end of the traffic, it's a stop and go. But we, we have three troopers that live on the street and they've issued. But, we, we have three troopers that live on the street, and they've issued quite a few tickets, because they've almost got.
But you've got the same, so I guess from the, what I think, what I'm trying, what I think Peter's saying, you've got two issues. You've got, you've got people coming around here just going this.
I get that, and the rounding is gonna do that too, you're right.
So you, so you've got, if you move it over like this, you have people going like that, and not really.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a full circle, because now you're, now you're taking this, you, you're coming over the top of the hill, and then you're starting a downhill turn like in New York.
Right.
It's even worse.
So let's look at, let's look at public safety first, okay? If someone does come down here and does take this side turn over here, this is an open area, right? Over here, so if they don't navigate that turn properly, they're gonna end up in the weeds over here.
Straight down.
And straight down, that's downhill.
Speed, yeah, very speed.
Good, okay, so there's no houses here or children there?
No, but you go into the other, the other, I mean.
You'll hit my well.
Their house is there.
Yeah, their well, their house.
Well, or kids playing on the street here, I mean, the idea is to have people slow down at intersections, right?
Yeah, they, they, they're coming into a level area and then dropping down. You don't want them maintaining speed.
Taylor, what's the traffic count on that road?
Put that down.
But still, you don't wanna.
It's not like King Street where everybody's going through the drive-stone.
So, that's what I'm saying, if, if thirty's the furthest you can go, we don't bring the seventy-seven down.
Seventy-seven? Right, it's not like King Street where you're talking about.
So then, so the other thing is you cut the roundings, right, to, to slow down the, the speed, which is not, that's a fire department issue, right? So that you can.
Yeah, because they just bought a big ladder truck, so.
They would have to go around the cul-de-sac.
They'd have to come back around.
So, so that's what I'm saying, if, if thirty's the extreme, okay? And that, that would do one thing and cause another problem, then we back it off, and so what would work?
I think leave it like it is.
Fifteen?
I think leave it like it is.
And we gotta come up with a light pollution and, and guardrail protection on the other side somehow?
I think I demonstrate the light issue.
You don't need guardrail. Is there a chance you can move your mailbox a little?
It's, it's not the mailbox that's the issue.
I know, but you brought the mailbox up more than once.
I'm sorry?
Your child going to the mailbox.
Yeah, well, it's, 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 it's our driveway, I mean, it's.
I understand that there's more to it.
This is a new subdivision, they've, they've been in an existing one, so, so I think the new subdivision has to be modified to meet the needs of the existing to live in harmony. We should, we should not be asking people to uproot a, a mailbox, it's been there for ten years.
Yeah, the mailbox, yeah, the mailbox isn't the issue. It's just that the road is directly in front of our street. And you mentioned that it's not, is it twelve feet or so width, the road?
That's a half lane, twenty-four feet wide pavement?
Twenty-four feet.
Twenty-four feet of pavement.
But this is the safest way, right?
Or, I wanna say.
Well, I'd say like a, a happy medium, there's gotta be a happy medium. If twelve feet doesn't do much, and it's still, we still have safety, it's better than thirty. Okay, we've still got a roundings, because we need them for the fire trucks and everything like that. But it does take the center line off his driveway.
The center line is technically off his driveway.
A lane.
Yes.
Is that what we're looking at right there? Yeah. So, so we'll just make it a little safer.
About keeping it as a T and put some signage.
Yeah, that worked well for White Stone.
This is different.
It's blasted right through there.
But this is the safest, because it comes to a T and ninety-degree.
I, I completely agree with, with everybody there, with one exception. We, we have a, we have a dwelling on the opposite side that, that's been there. We, we, for traffic flow, absolutely. You start entering driveways, kids, and somebody else's house, we, we have a new ball of wax.
We're gonna make it da, more dangerous.
Well, that's what I'm trying to figure out from the engineers, if, if we slide a little.
I'd mention possibly narrowing his driveway in this time. It has an unusual situation where there's like about six or eight foot, like almost, the, the sidewalk comes down before the driveway. If you wanna narrow his driveway down to reduce that opening, the potential for cars to come into it, you could also consider potential some trees or some shrubbery in the front yard.
Yeah.
To, to protect him from light pollution. I think it would be more appropriate measures to address the concern about, uh, you know, changing the safety of the, you know, entrance road itself in other areas.
Okay, but, um, I'm still not, maybe I'm not asking the right question. If thirty feet's too wide.
Unless you start drawing and looking at it, I, I, I think you really can't judge.
Can we, can we challenge the engineers to come up with something, a happy medium, not, not as far as thirty feet, but?
Well, I, I guess from the applicants' point of view, I'd like to hear what the board has to say. Because I hear what you say, and then I hear what you say, and then I hear what he says, and that's not the board, so. We just lost a point.
Okay. Alright.
Alright, we need to have a little recess while he does a vote in there.
Anybody got paperwork to bring up or anything, in the meantime? Can you do a quick sketch in the meantime?
Bring a laptop?
No, just, get out the old slide rule and just kinda wing it, see what it does.
Get my point in there, right?
Either that, or we'll continue that and we'll meet back on site and see what, start throwing tape measures out, but I, I think it's, I'm just looking for something in between.
Change the round light, do you?
No, but when someone comes across, we go around.
Recession until Bobby gets back.
Do you guys get?
We need a quarrel.
We're, we're going fuck, plonning issues and lot leases.
Okay, so.
So it looks like maybe we've come up with a solution, potentially. Taylor, Peter, who do you want?
Yes, so while we computer myself, for the record, my name is Taylor Turb, I'm a leniency engineer. I don't think I did that ever. Here represent the advocate. What we suggested is, from an engineering aspect, our biggest concern is by rotating, not only is it a waiver request, which if the board is so inclined, that's not the issue, it's more a safety thing, allowing it to become like a freeway, people be able to turn at a high speed. Whereas in ninety, closer to your 90, it forces people to turn down to make that turn. So what we've suggested to try and get the drug, the car coming up the hill further uphill of the driveway, is literally picking this up and shifting the whole entrance five feet, and then making up the centerline radius curve, so it'll essentially curve, come down here, and the road will curve and then meet up back here again. So essentially something like that. Basically, the entire entrance will shift five feet up there.
Actually, I think that will also give us a very, it's actually a tighter curve when they approach the intersection.
Correct, yeah.
So that'll go a little bit more of a traffic commie.
Yeah, and there is, without doing the analysis, I will bring this point up now. There is a potential that this could introduce a waiver request for centerline radius, just so the board is aware.
Not above, okay. And then the guardrail or something on the other side?
Yeah, that, we have no.
Would a guardrail in front of your house?
I don't think that would look good.
Or would like our, righties or something, or a guardrail.
What do you want?
Sounds like he doesn't want a guardrail.
Oh, it would look nice.
The plant shrubbery?
I'm sorry?
Shrubbery.
Shrubbery, yeah.
But just that'll just help out with the light, the light solution.
The lights are going off the side, and now you're even needing it.
Let's, maybe we can see if you could get an early copy of the plan for the abider. And he sees where it is and whether he feels that there's a need for shrubbery, whatever, disturbance of property.
Keep in mind, this angle is not changing, so the angle currently has the lights outside your house. Now we're shifting it another five feet, so it'll be five feet further up, though with the light.
Yeah, no, I think, like I said, yeah, I appreciate that. You know, I think that's the best outcome I could ask for with the, you know, without it moving, you know, in a completely different location outside of my driveway. So, that works.
So if that's okay with all the board members?
Yes.
Good, good. Anything else?
That's all tonight.
Should've set a new date.
We need to set a new date, and we'll have the responses, and maybe another whole other round. We'll finish the responses and then go back to the board.
Now that we have this issue, hope, we were hoping to do this sidewalk, but um, it's why we haven't responded yet.
Yep.
Um, we reviewed them all, they're all issues that should be no issue responding to, so now that we have this resolved, we'll get right. Moving on with resolving these issues.
Two weeks, two weeks good?
Two weeks, good.
Yep.
Everybody two weeks?
Is that our review, if I get it this week?
Two weeks?
Yeah.
Yep. If I get you something by late this week, Monday, Tuesday at the latest?
No, it's an election day. Oh, that's okay, this is a forty-one. Do you have an election here? No.
There is one coming up.
Go look at the comments here.
But this is a non forty A, it's a forty-one, so you okay, you don't buy it?
Yeah, it's in the room. So we could, do Wednesday. That's town meeting now.
Oh, it's not the date of the.
Town meeting on the October twenty-sixth.
Next Monday.
Yeah, these are different articles.
So Tuesday the third?
November third.
Yeah, I'm all right.
Yeah, it's just the availability of this room.
So what, what date?
Tuesday the.
Tuesday the third.
Election day.
That's what we, so if we can't do it Tuesday, we might have to shift it to the Wednesday.
I'm not sure when Jim's gonna be back, but.
Suggestions? Okay, so, so why don't we make it the Wednesday that we'll have the room back? Can't do it Wednesday, okay.
Can't do it Monday.
Ten? Do Thursday, the fifth?
Yeah, Thursday the fifth, that would work for me.
Works for me.
Thursdays.
I won't be in.
I'm sorry, who's on?
How about the week after that?
Yeah, do you want to do the following Tuesday, the tenth?
Can I do it together ahead of time?
Do everything?
Tuesday the tenth?
Yep, I'm good.
I can't make the tenth. All right.
Ninth, Monday the ninth?
Can't do Mondays with the other boards. Wednesday.
Well, Monday the second.
Wednesday Veterans Day, the eleventh, so now we're skating into that.
Monday the second?
Can't do Monday with the other boards.
They take up the round.
We can't, oh, you're gonna do Monday, you're saying?
Yeah, we can't because of the four selectmen's meeting and every day take over, so.
And we can't do the third, why? Is that?
Be a better.
What was the, on the third?
Right.
How about the fifth? Thursday the fifth?
I'm in a conference all weekend, that's all week, the Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and then the fourth.
Bob, Bob.
I'm all right with it.
So we got Tuesday, the tenth is another, is that, is that open?
No, I'm not available that day.
They're not available that day.
Monday the ninth is not possible?
Monday's, oh, wait a minute, what did they need last?
Yes, I think it's like, so they're gonna take it, and then Wednesday's the Veterans Day.
Not every, it's every other Monday for selectmen, so they had it last night. Right, Charlie?
Yeah, the hell of a.
Last night.
They're gonna be on the second, and they won't be the ninth. So we could do it the ninth, but the selectmen aren't gonna be here. Because they're gonna be next on the second, and then the ninth should be open.
Should be open.
Do the ninth?
And even if it isn't, we could have it in that other room where I just was.
Yeah, that's great.
Everybody good with that? Monday night, do that?
This is November ninth, November nine, yep.
November ninth is it?
Monday.
Monday.
What time are we doing?
Eight o'clock, seven thirty, what?
Seven thirty.
No, seven thirty is sign offs and mail. Quarter of eight is the earliest.
Just out of forty-five?
For the hearing, but.
Seven forty-five, yep.
Motion to continue?
So motion to continue on the ninth second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else for the planning board meeting tonight? Okay, we have to vote. Bob wants to put a modification on Homestead for field change. To uh.
From the RC type five pipe to the AS TM pipe.
It's a circular.
Three foot is the depth of the shallowest pipe, and this requires forty-eight inches, only twenty-four inches coverage. So we've got plenty of coverage, and pipe is sufficient to handle it all the way as long as it's installed, right? So I want to make a motion that we modify the plan from RC to. And you talk on the.
Yes.
Second.
Uh, motion to endorse the construction bill. For Lulu and for Homestead Lane and for Skip Sheen Way. All in favor?
Second.
All of, um.
Aye.
Yeah, both of you need to sign.
Yeah, definitely, I appreciate it, thank you.
Good night, gentlemen.
Good night, thank you.
Thank you, brother.
A little rogue. Yeah, yeah. That was just enough, just enough to do it, okay.
Yeah, five feet, keep the T, I'm happy with that.
Yeah, that'll work, keep it.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's got a diagram here on the. Do I have to sign it too or not?
Yeah.
Oh, just Wally's and that, yeah.
There we go. All right, who else got? That's it?
That's it.
Same, motion to close the meeting?
Wait a minute, is Scott, Scott Green coming in with the? No, not yet, with Vaughn, no. Oh, so he might call you during the week, then, right? In the next two weeks? Yeah. All right.
Motion to close?
So motion. Second.
All in favor? Aye, show the voting animals, show the meeting closed nine o'clock. Thank you for watching at home.
Showing me exactly what they need to do.